Second, 2013. We have one public hearing tonight regarding a zoning change for property at 2876 and 2900 Oleen Street, and then we'll move into the regular agenda if the clerk would read item number one.
Item number one, for final consideration, an ordinance amending section 87 of the code of the City of Schenectady relative to management benefits.
All right, this is dealing with health benefits. It's been discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, for original consideration, an ordinance changing the zoning district 487 Knott Street introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing on the above proposed ordinance for August 12th, 2013.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, a resolution committing HUD Home Program Income Funds.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution adopting the final 2013-2014 Consolidated Plan.
This has also been discussed many times without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution making appointments to the City of Schenectady's residency board.
Also discussed in committee. This will have Marva Isaacs appointed to the residency board without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the curing of title of 2517 Consul Road consisting of tax parcel number 50.78-3-13 by granting title to Catherine Fuller.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing the curing of title of 1230 First Avenue consisting of tax parcel number 49.38-1-71 by granting title to Taka Lehman.
Maybe Lockman, but anyway, without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the curing of title of 536 Mumford Street consisting of tax parcel number 49.31-3-22 by granting title to Tatram Mangra and Angelina Mangra.
Without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution accepting title to certain properties from the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency.
This has also been discussed without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning 2524 Van Franken Avenue.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning a property located at 501 South Avenue.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning a property located at 1835 Van Franken Avenue.
Again, discussed in the claims committee without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning a property located at 522 Manhattan Street.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning a property located at 242 McClellan Street.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning 408 Union Street.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 16.
Item number 16, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a tax servicer concerning certain properties owned by Dion Bagnato and Jeanette Bagnato.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 17.
Item number 17, a resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim with Ruben J. Campolo for the amount of $3,538.27.
Also discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 18.
A resolution recognizing and honoring George Rose and Chandra Goodwin for years of volunteer service to the Schenectady Belmont Pop Warner Football Program.
All right, we'll be taking this out of order. Ms. Porterfield, you'll present that? Thank you. Item number 19.
Item number 19, under contract and supplies, a resolution authorizing the award of three contracts for the 2013 WPCP Dewatering Centrifuge.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And item 19A.
Item 19A, under unanimous consent, a resolution authorizing more Parecas Incorporated to serve alcoholic beverages at a public event on September 7th, 2013.
All right, and then I'll, after we've done the regular vote, I'll call for a motion for this one. Okay, is there anything else to come before the City Council Caucus? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Erickson, seconded by Ms. Perazzo, all in favor? Aye. Okay, the caucus meeting is adjourned. I will now call the city council meeting for July 22nd, 2013 to order and ask you to rise for the invocation from Reverend Parsons from consecration temple.
I'd like to start with our familiar Psalms. The Lord is my shepherd; I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures. He leadeth me beside the still waters. He restores my soul. He leadeth me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thou rod and thou stab, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Thou anointeth my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Father, we come tonight asking your blessings over not only this council, but over our city. I'm asking you, dear Lord, feed the mind of our leaders of this town and feed the minds of the people that live within. Cover us with your blessing. Remove everything that's not like you. Let the spirit of unity prevail from this council throughout the city. In Jesus' name, amen and amen.
I'll call on Helga Schroeder to lead us in the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo. Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Erickson.
Aye.
Mr. Riggi.
Aye.
Ms. Brucker.
Aye.
Ms. King.
Present.
Ms. Blanchard is excused.
All right, we have one out-of-order resolution, so Ms. Porterfield, I'll ask you to step Ms. Goodwin and Mr. Rose, if you'd like to come behind the rail, please. Madam President.
Yeah, before.
Tonight, we have a resolution recognizing and honoring George Rose and Chandra Goodwin for years of volunteer service to the Schenectady Belmont Pop Warner Football Program. Whereas Mr. George Rose is known in the Schenectady community for his love of children and devotion to making the Belmont Pop Warner Football Program a success, and whereas for more than 45 years, George Rose was involved in the program, never missing a single Pop Warner season, not even after he had a stroke in 1986, and whereas Mr. Rose believes believing that adults must instill values in our youth, has become legendary in the community for his decades of volunteer service assisting inner-city children, and whereas Ms. Chandra Goodwin, a proud mother of five, is committed to youth in our community and has, by example, taught them the importance of commitment and working together, and has for over 30 years devoted her time to Belmont Pop Warner Football, school organizations, and after-school programs. And whereas during the 1980s, she began, became involved in Belmont Pop Warner Football and has served as treasurer, cheerleading coach, concession stand assistant, and continues to support the program, and whereas Chandra Goodwin is admired, respected, and loved by her family, the children who participated in the program, she served, and the larger community, and whereas the City of Schenectady wishes to recognize the valuable services provided to the youth of Schenectady by both George Rose and Chandra Goodwin through the Schenectady Belmont Pop Warner Football Program. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of Schenectady pauses in its deliberations to recognize and express its appreciation to these two individuals for their dedication to the youth of Schenectady. Madam President, I remove the resolution. All right, seconded by Mr. Riggi. All in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
And I'd just also like to say, personally say thank you. I know the work that you do and, you know, what you've done for our children, who are the most valuable part of our community and our future, so thank you again. And I have, yes.
It's been over 50 years.
Oh, it was over 50 years. I'll let you tell. Would you, would you like to say something?
It's been going on about 55 years that we're doing Pop Warner. I started over on off-road way back when, and $10 sent me open to Belmont, Schenectady Belmont Pop Warner, because they wouldn't give me my $10. My son was too likely to make the weight and didn't give my money back. And I worked a G, second shift, so every lunch hour to get my $10, so I didn't have to come to Belmont and bring it back. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. God bless. Oh, thank you. Thank you. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we have one public hearing. If the clerk would read that.
Public hearing, authorizing a zoning change from an M2 manufacturing district to an R1 residential district for property at 2876 and 2900 Oleen Street.
All right, I have no one signed up to speak to this public hearing, so I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. We will move on then to approval of the minutes. Okay, Ms. Perazzo moves it. Mrs. Brucker seconds. All in favor? Aye. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the city council for Monday, July 22nd, 2013. Under official, from the mayor, a list of appointments dated July 22nd, 2013. From Paul Lefon, Director of Water and Wastewater, a letter dated July 22nd, 2013 recommending the award of the three contracts for the 2013 WPCP Dewatering Centrifuge project to the three lowest responsible bidders. Under general, there are none. Under petitions, there are none.
All right, do we have any committee reports? Ms. Perazzo.
Just a little follow-up on something that went through the Government Operations Committee. Summer night was this past Friday, a wonderful evening. It was plenty warm. No one was cold, but no one got rained on, and it was just, it was a really special night. You know, there's a lot going on in the City of Schenectady for free, for our citizens to come out and, and come together in fellowship and just have a plain old darn good time. So, thank you to everyone who is involved in the planning. A lot of, a lot of work hours go into the planning and can't wait till next year.
Right. It was definitely a very good event. Any other committee reports? Okay, then we'll move on to privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have three people signed up to speak. The first is Linda Kelleher.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and fellow city residents. My name is Linda Kelleher, and I've lived and owned property here in the city for over 30 years. This $3 million alone will be paid back by future CDBG money, future meaning the next 20 years. As such, the pool of CDBG funding will not be available for not-for-profits and neighbor associations, but of course, it is more important and beneficial to some of you council members and the mayor to give half a million dollars of taxpayers' money to a private developer, the Gleisi Group, and be aware, this developer is one of the largest private developers in the state. In addition to this gift to the Gleisi Group, he will receive a tax incentive for the new residential building. This will be in the form of a pilot or payment in lieu of taxes. As a property owner of over 30 years, I have never, and I bet, most city property owners haven't received a tax break on their property. So why should he? City residents need to be informed. They need to follow the money. See who is contributing to who. A two-page color ad in a political party's program should be a helpful hint. This is a done deal. The city recessed this issue two weeks ago only to take it out of the public eye to vote on it in committee. Only two council members stood firm, Vince Riggi and Marion Porterfield. Shame on the rest of you. I hope voters remember this issue in November.
Thank you. Joseph Kelleher.
Just hand this to the clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much. When I spoke of the rail here just four weeks ago, I recommended against the Gleisi Group, giving that Gleisi Group $1.3 million for the remediation and renovation of the old DSS building located at 487 Knott Street. I did recommend, though, that it would be more cost-effective to demolish and rebuild that building. I was enlightened, as you can imagine, to learn that the city council majority took my recommendation as their own. However, I never recommended using taxpayer dollars to fund a private developer with a privately-owned building. This is the responsibility of the buyer, who knew full well the condition of the property. The whole $3 million loan is expected to be repaid by unsecured future funds, which were meant to improve our neighborhoods and city as a whole. It seems, however, that the deal was already done back in May, when the mayor met with the buyer and told them the funds were coming. This is what Mayor McCarthy admitted to during the city council meeting just last week on July 15th. The people of Schenectady have had enough of the back-room deals and out-of-control spending. They want transparency. Longtime local businesses like Matthew's Signs on Eastern Avenue can't get a cover for a city-owned trash receptacle in front of the building, but we can give half a million dollars to a multimillion-dollar corporation for demolishing their building, which they bought for a dollar, and plus paying, of course, the $200,000 in the water bill. The people are following the money, and they do see where it leads. As I stated four weeks ago, this is a loan, this loan is for three separate issues. Funding a private developer should not be one of them. I oppose this plan as it is written. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
Okay. Then I have no one else signed up to speak on the legislative agenda, so I'll declare this portion of the meeting closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Okay, Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Ms. Porterfield. All in favor? Aye. And we have one extra item on the agenda for unanimous consent. If the clerk would again read that one.
Under unanimous consent, a resolution authorizing more Parecas Incorporated to serve alcoholic beverages at a public event on September 7th, 2013.
And this is actually a correction to an earlier resolution that we had passed, so... Okay, Ms. Perazzo moves it, seconded by Mrs. Brucker. All in favor? Aye. All right, that'll put it on the agenda, and then motion to approve it, unanimous consent. Okay, Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Mrs. Brucker. All in favor? Aye. Okay, so that is approved. All right, then we will down, move on to privilege of the floor regarding city issues. The first person I have signed up is Dave Monte.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Madam President, council members. I was here on May 29th to address the city council about a problem on my sidewalk regarding the tree that was on the corner of the lot. I didn't hear back anything for about two, three weeks, so I ran into one of you council members, and they made a few phone calls to check on what was going on, and come to find out that it was just waylaid, but thanks to this one council member, the tree did come down. Part of the sidewalk was fixed temporarily, and they said that they would be back at a later date to fix the sidewalk, because it's just laying there right now. And I just want to say thank you very much to Councilman Riggi, because he took it upon himself to make sure that this got done, and he did. He came over, he looked at the sidewalk, see how, saw how bad it was, and how my car got destroyed from coming in and out of the driveway, and he did. He got it fixed for me. Temporarily it's done, but Mr. Olson said that he would be back to take care of it permanently. And I just wanted to come here tonight and personally thank Mr. Riggi, Mr. Olson, who's not here, and one other person I just want to thank tonight, too, for something Mr. Riggi did for us in our neighborhood, because we have a homeowner that plays our loud music from 8:00 at night to 4, 5:00 in the morning, and every time we set call, patrol call goes up, they turn the music off. It's every weekend. So Councilman Riggi took it and went to Commissioner Bennett with it, and it was taken care of. We sat at our house and watched a supervisor and a few other police officers go to the house and informed them they can't be playing their music till 5:00 in the morning. So again, I want to thank Commissioner Bennett for taking care of that problem, and personally thank Vince Riggi for all the work that he did for us. So that's all I got.
Good. Glad your problem's been resolved. Thank you. Martin Beister.
Good evening. My name's Martin Beister. I own a home on 18 River Street that was flooded into this first-floor apartment in 2011 by the hurricane and/or the tropical storm. I'm here because I find in the, on the internet, this picture of a development by Gleisi Corporation in the floodplain at the former Alco Properties, and I think this is putting my property at risk. I'd like to pass this out to the individuals here. My property is on 18 River Street. I've used some topographical maps to map out how the flooding occurred in 2011. It cost me $50,000 to re-repair my house or restore it, and I'm concerned that the Gleisi, or the Gleisi project will raise the level of the, and the frequency of flooding in my area. This also not only includes the East Front Street Association or neighborhood, but also What I'd like to present, suggest, or actually ask for is, from the city council, is that the process, the SECOR process, the State Environmental Quality Review Act, be used in evaluating this property. I think there is a very adverse effect on my personal property, on the, my neighborhood, East Front Street neighborhood, and also the stockade, because the possibility of raising the river level during flood and also the frequency of floods. I have a summary of the SECOR process I'd like to submit to you. And I'd also like a formal response. Now, I don't know that I have all the facts, but I don't think this project can proceed without a proper review to the public because of its adverse environmental effects on my neighborhood, the East Front Street neighborhood, and also the stockade. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tony Benone.
Tony Benone, both of you. First of all, all weekend long on Channel 18, I got sick to my stomach just turning, every time I flipped by the station, showing the tax delinquent people in this city. I mean, it is unbelievable what is owed to this city. I mean, by people owning four or five different properties, one of them, I read quickly, was close to $70,000 to $100,000 in back taxes according to that list. Something, I don't know how you can do it, but I think something should be done. I mean, there's people on there, I know they got Cadillacs in their yard, I know people that, they honored a person one time at a family down here, gave a minute of silence when the one person's family died. They're on the tax list. I mean, we've got to do something. I know probably legally our hands are tied, but that's an awful lot of money, and we probably could be sitting pretty if we got some of that. Another thing, last week, I didn't attend, two weeks ago, I didn't attend a meeting. You passed a, for the YWCA, a contract for them to run the pool down on Front Street. Now, I know my granddaughter was swimming down there before, two weeks ago. Now, are we passing this after they're taking over the pool, or what? I mean, shouldn't they be waiting until the contract is up that you people okayed it? I mean, it doesn't make sense that you pass a contract, you give them a contract on a Monday night, but the week before, there's people swimming in the pool down there with them. So I think we've got to, we've got to do something. So, and I'm wondering if I can get a copy of that contract. Is there any way I can get a copy of that contract? So whenever you get a chance, you could let me know. Another thing, the bridge, Oak Street Bridge there. Now, I know it's a safety, it's safety, and I know that the city and the railroads are having problems. Now, we have a Democratic mayor, majority Democrats on the council, or state senators, a Democrat. Why can't we contact him, Mr. Schumer? He contacts the railroad to get bicycles put on the train. Can you tell him that there's a safety going on here, something that it's affecting the people of the city, that something should be done with this bridge? I hear there's a three-to-four-minute delay from when the, the bridge was open. City-owned property where people are going in and renting them, if something goes wrong with the property, the city's not responsible for it. It was in the paper. Now, if I own property, rental property, if something went wrong with the property, I'm responsible for it. Now, do we have two different things, one for the city and one for the private owners? And that's... And last, two weeks ago, they, they mentioned Hugh Williams, they were doing something with Hugh Williams. And with this honoring the, the football tonight, when Hugh died about six, eight months ago, I got up here and said how much he volunteered for them, and volunteered, gave money to kids down the Boulevard Bowl, to bowl, so that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Harry Brand.
Harry Brand, resident taxpayer in City of Schenectady. I want to thank you, Ms. Porterfield and Mr. Riggy, for your no vote on the $500,000 for Mr. Gillesse's group. The rest of you, I feel sorry for you. That you can't use some good common sense, it's beyond me. Mr. Gillesse owns approximately $300 million in property locally, and you're going to help him out with a half million dollars. Aren't you wonderful people? We got an air conditioner here that sounds like a freight train going through. You can't air condition this room. You can't take care of this building properly. The mayor just appropriated $50,000 for windows so they don't fall out? The rest of this city looks like it was World War II wipeout. It looks terrible, and you want to give Mr. Gillesse $500,000? I don't understand it, and I never will. He owns that property on Broadway for DSS, he owns the theater downtown, he owns Center City, he owns Mr. Golub's property, he owns the property by the river, and you're going to give him $500,000? Metroplex takes care of him. He gets a tax deduction, and you're giving him $500,000 for all your strong leadership? That's a poor decision in my opinion, and many other citizens in this city. And it's time you wake up to that fact, each and every one of you. I truly feel that any member on our City Council serving more than eight years should go, and that should be in our laws, in our constitution and bylaws. It's outrageous. You don't have the interest in the citizens. Why do you think you have nobody down here? And every time I come, I have to complain because of your lousy, stinking voting. It's terrible. It's sinful, actually, the way things are going on. Did you ever think about that $25 million property on Van Franken Avenue? Did you ever go over there and go through it and see what goes on there? Did you ever go to the sewage plant and see what goes on there? And if the ploys are happy? I doubt it. There's more dissension in this city than I've ever seen. You gave a contract out in 2010 for four crime investigators up around the Lake George region, eight regions, to take their vehicles home? That should never be renewed, it should never existed in the first place. You're spending money like water during all these difficult times. You didn't freeze wages, you gave money away, 10, $20,000 salary increases. The citizens can pay for it, the taxpayers can pay for it, that's all you have to do is raise fees and raise taxes. I'm disappointed with the majority of you. That's very poor leadership in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Kelleher.
Good evening once again, I'm Joe Kelleher, resident of the city of Schenectady. Just a couple of quick things, I spoke my piece earlier about the Gillesse Corporation, but there were a couple of very good things happening in the city that I did want to mention about. One in particular was this past Friday night, my wife and I happened to be downtown for the Schenectady County Summer Night, and a very enjoyable evening, saw lots of familiar faces down over that way, and it was very nice to see. Coming up on the 4th of August, Sunday, the Habitat for Humanity Women Build Barbecue and Blues Bash is going to be over at the Central Park Pavilion, and my wife and I is living right there on the gateway to Central Park, look forward to being there from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. I also wanted to mention about the Mount Pleasant Picnic that's coming up next month on Thursday, August 8th, in the evening, it's going to be a fantastic event, and we look forward to being there too. As a veteran and a member of the American Legion, I do want to remind people that they're welcome to bring and encouraged to bring their retired flags to the American Legion Post 1092 over to, at 1809 Union Street, just over the border in Niskiuna. They're welcome to stop by inasmuch, those, we use those flags not only to retire, but to cut out the Stars, to use for Stars for our troops, of which my wife, Linda, is one of the leads in that program in this area over here. So if people are interested in doing that, they can be there on Tuesday night, July, excuse me, July 30th, at 6:00 PM at the American Legion Post 1092, that's at 1809 Union Street. They can contact me if they have flags, or if they need to, if they need information about the Stars for our troops event at 881-6467. And the last thing I want, did want to mention regarding transparency is I see plenty of lists of appointments being made at multiple committee meetings and council meetings, but we never really see a list of who those appointments are. And it'd be awful nice to see not only who these appointees are, but their residency as well. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mary McLean.
My name is Mary McLean, Endor Street Republican candidate for Schenectady City Council. The petitions are in, and they have been verified. My name will appear on the ballot. There sit two of my opponents. No one in this administration can hide behind human imperfections. If you say it, you own it. If you vote for it, you are responsible for it, and the items will be addressed. One recent comment was, "Good things are happening in the city of Schenectady. There is nothing good about an eight-year county contract." Four council members voted for it. The city financial expert found a $3 million discrepancy in the contract, and he was fired. Nor did Moody buy the city's strategy. Not good. Regarding the comment, "Community is what you make it." The city owns property in every neighborhood. What kind of neighbor is the city to the rest of us? My husband cleans out the storm drains near our street. Why? My husband cuts the high grass that is allowed to grow around the fire hydrant. Why? I have invested in weed begone to kill the unsightly weeds that are so plentiful at this time of year. Why? And this list goes on and on. As for proctors, I ran for City Council nine years ago. Promoting tourism was one of my issues. Proctors have seven and a half years of catching up to do. This pamphlet reads, "Proctors." This reads, "Proctors." The pictures inside feature things about proctors. I want this to say Schenectady. I want this to say Schenectady. I want to see pictures in here about busloads of people who come to our culinary school to have lunch and dinner, like they do at the CIA in Hyde Park. I like to see a mini-operation, Lake Williamsburg. I was very disappointed when the Gillette Project fell through. I want to see weekend packages geared to tourists to offer them what we have with our cultures, of our Indian and Dutch cultures. Lastly, I agree with the mayor, who said Schenectady is doing things that other cities do not do.
I need you to summarize, please.
And what are they? I'm almost done. Limited speech, abundance of city-owned cars, paid medical coverage for part-time elected officials.
Thank you, Mrs. McLean.
These kinds of things, one more.
Please.
Are intentional imperfection. No one here has said anything about the closing of that medical clinic. Shame on us.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak on privilege of the floor, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed and will move to miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Parrazo.
Thank you. Just wanted to clear up a couple of discrepancies. Number one, there is no guarantee that Gillesse is looking to take a pilot on that building. They said they would apply for opportunities available to them. They don't know what they are, we don't know what they are, there might not be any, so that's one thing. Number two, that vote was not taken out of the public's eye, the public is welcome in the room. The meeting is also taped, and we all voted out in the open, and is recorded for everyone here, and as I said, they can also sit in the room. Number three, this gives me an excellent opportunity to write something, well, it's not wrong, but to clarify something. When this originally was brought up in our committee meeting, with all due respect to Mr. Kelleher, prior to his coming to the last council meeting and offering us his input, which is very important to us, the question was already raised in the committee meeting of the cost of demolition. The following meeting, Mr. Erickson had already gone and met directly with Gillesse to talk to them about their former bids on demolition and to see how feasible that was. Unfortunately, Mr. Erickson was not able to attend the next meeting due to a personal family tragedy, and I carried his voice to the meeting, and since then have been quoted in the paper as the person who brought the demolition forward. So, I would like to clarify right now that Mr. Erickson indeed was the person who went and not only met with Gillesse, but brought the information to the council prior to that council meeting. So let's set the record straight on that. This also gives me the opportunity to once again explain my vote, which I feel very comfortable with, although it wasn't an easy decision to make. The grant monies offered in this $3 million loan are not only provided for demolition, but also must include housing. Indeed, Gillesse has owned that building for two years, yes, they did buy it for a dollar, and yes, it has been in the IDA because it was not a financially feasible project, therefore it has been off the tax rolls for two years. The Gillesse Corporation was not able to move forward with any sort of project in that area, because again, it was not financially feasible. In an effort to foster development down that corridor, the city is making an investment to remove a blighted building so that housing can be erected on that site. I might also mention 51% low to moderate income housing, and that property can go back on the tax rolls. So I want to clarify that, I stand by my vote, I am speaking it publicly, although the last time I spoke it publicly as well, and just wanted to clarify that. Now onto the good and happy news. Stockade Picnic is tomorrow night in Front Street, and I believe all are welcome for either a donation to the Stockade Association or some food, and I think it's going to be a lovely evening. I also want to congratulate Habitat for Humanity in the North Side for a phenomenal cleanup effort on Saturday, through that North Side corridor, that we're starting to continue our focus as we are through all of the neighborhoods in the Homes Program and the, you know, buying of foreclosed properties. I also want to give a big shout out to Gwenny's Breakfast Wagon. It's a local food truck in Schenectady that has just had national recognition on Live with Kelly and Michael. So they are, if you go to the website, you can vote for them. Wouldn't it be wonderful if they won a national contest for food trucks right here in our own backyard? Lastly, and most importantly, as coincidence has it, I have the letter from Ellis Medicine to talk about the closing of the Free Clinic, this is very important information. For a long time, the clinic struggled with funding, and in this day and age, and in this economy, it just could simply not survive anymore. That being said, the community recognizes how vitally important this level of care is to so many impoverished people in Schenectady. So people that used to go to the Free Clinic can now either go to Home Town Healthcare or Ellison Medicine, either the primary care location or the Family Health Clinic on McLellan Street, and they will have a seamless transition into those very same services, just at another location. Both are on major bus lines, so transportation will not be a hardship for people who have to go to a different location. And I think that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. Just a, just a couple of things. First of all, you were hearing a lot about the litter situation in the city, so I just wanted to let people know that there's a couple of neighborhood organizations actually that have come together to work on proposal that obviously would be brought to all neighborhoods, so, you know, it's a situation that we could all work on together. Because to me, it's not a problem that's really unswearmalleable, because if we work on it neighborhood by neighborhood, it's something that we can change the look of our city overall, and I think it can be done quite simply. So by the next council meeting, you'll be hearing more about that and where we are with that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is that this past Saturday, we had our third End Poverty Schenectady Forum, and the panel this time was a group of young people, the youngest, I think, was 17, and the oldest was 28. And it was really interesting to hear what they had to say, their perspective on what it was like to live in poverty, what poverty looked like in their community, but more than that, we heard stories from young people who had gone through some struggles, but walked away, or became young people who are really now contributing to our community in a good way, and have plans for their lives to be business owners and things like that. So, we plan on doing that again in the near future, within a couple of months hopefully. But it was just interesting to hear, and I want people to be clear that when we're talking about End Poverty Schenectady, we're not talking about ways to do, give more services to people, but ways to provide opportunities. So that sometimes people hear that word and they think, you know, it's just more programs. No, it's about providing opportunities, hearing what type of opportunities people feel that need to be provided, especially young people, because I think it's important to hear the voice of young people within our city to, to get their perspective. Sometimes decision-makers are older than 28, so it's, you know, it's good to hear what younger people have to say. And again, I have to say, there was some really wonderful input that they, they had to give, and I will be sending out at least to the council members notes on, on the outcome of that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm glad to see Marion brought it forward, and the council passed a resolution for George Rose and Chandra. What those people do for the children of City of Schenectady is invaluable for sure. And he's put in 52 years, and if it's only because he didn't get his $10 back for his son, that's, that's a pretty good story. With volunteers like George, I think a George has the Mike Maeta of, you know, he's the Mike Maeta of football, and what Mike did for the kids with baseball in this city, George has done for the kids with football, and it certainly keeps the kids occupied, it teaches them good rules and good sportsmanship, so it's an invaluable service provided by these people, and I think it's, it's a long time coming for George, and I'm glad to see that. And next year, I'm planning on doing something for Mike Maeta, because next year is the 60th anniversary of the, Schenectady winning the Little League World Series in 1954, and that's a huge event, and it was a huge event back then, and it's, it's still something that everyone should be proud of in Schenectady. Well, Mr. Monte coming to the rail, I want to tell you, Mayor, your department heads make my job easy, and I'm sure it makes your job easy too. I ask for something, they respond. I'm not doing anything special, particularly special or anything like that, so in my humble opinion, it's because of your department heads responding and responding positively, which I've talked to you before, and I'm glad you afford the council that service, because it's, it's very important, because you can't be everywhere, and everybody here can't be everywhere at the same time. So, I have extra time on my hands at times, and it works out well, but it's well appreciated, but the city workers deserve all the, all the accolades when, when this comes down, because they're the ones who are doing the work, and the department heads are supervising this. So I think it's good, and I appreciate that. So I think it's good, and I appreciate that. The problems that Mr. Beister brought forward, I think these are valid concerns, Mayor, and I don't know if you can either set up a meeting, if they have concerns about that elevation. I assume the secret review was already done, I'm gonna assume. It hasn't been done. Okay. Well, I assumed wrong then. So that's another thing, you could explain this then. But maybe we should get the neighborhood involved, since they have various concerns, and it's, it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect me up in Bellevue. We're up high, so we don't worry about flooding there, but the people in the Stockade and the Front Street area certainly have valid concerns, so maybe that's something that can be worked out, and so their concerns are belated, and I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good, Mr. Riggi, that's an ongoing process, design work, still working with the Army Corps of Engineers, the things that are floating there are proposals. It's not anything that is 100%. It's, you know, how do you get the best utilization of that facility, that site? And we've actually seen a better management of the river more recently. I joked that when Brian Stratton was mayor, was on the council, talked to him on a regular basis. More recently, all my conversations tend to be at 3 o'clock or 4 o'clock in the morning with him, when we're exchanging hydrology reports for water flow in the Mohawk River. In more recent times, we had severe flooding farther up the Mohawk River, but here, the early predictions indicated that we would have flooding a couple times in the Stockade area. Not as dramatic as we had during Irene or Lee, but significant, but the Canal Corporation, again, managed the flow of the river better by opening up the dams that exist in the lock and improved the flow of water. On that tree issue that was taken care of, again, I think the night the gentleman brought it to the attention of the council, I was not here to the meeting in Albany, and Commissioner Bennett was sitting in. That night, we had a slight tornado in Bellevue, which put things back a little bit in terms of the scheduling, and did get the tree down, the sidewalk, and those, we don't fix those things immediately, because we don't buy short loads of concrete. We wait until we can get a full truckload of concrete so that it is actually cheaper, and we will do two, three, four, five different spots where concrete has to be placed. That's why sometimes you'll see crews work on catch basins or other thing. You'll see, they'll start to dig it up, take it apart, and it'll sit there for a while. It's, they're waiting until they can get, again, enough of them set up so that when you buy a truckload of concrete, they can come through and pour the concrete in all those sites. So that we do try and do things, try and schedule it and get it done as best we can to, you know, address the needs of the citizens of the neighborhood. And the building on Knott Street, again, some level of controversy. I don't mind discussion and debate. People who just criticize, who stand up and say, "No, you shouldn't do it," and do not offer any alternative, that's things that we had in the past. They want to just leave problems there. They don't want to deal with it. And sometimes you have to deal with things that you would prefer not to, and some of them cost money. I want the progress to continue in the community. We've seen a lot of good things happening. Good things are continuing to happen, and we're gonna continue to deal with these problems. Saturday, we saw the Habitat for Humanity come out in the North End, trying to do these things citywide to create individual opportunities and involve neighborhood associations to do some of the little things, because we do not have enough money to do everything that we would like to as quickly as we'd like to. So we work through it in a systematic fashion. Again, as people talked about the Summer Night, primarily sponsored by the county, a great event, good times, and I don't know who the county put in charge of the weather, but the thunderstorms moved around Schenectady so that while it was a little bit warm that evening, everybody had a very pleasant and enjoyable evening, spectacular fireworks, and it was just a good time for all. So I thank you, Madam President, and appreciate all the council's efforts on all the things that you do in behalf of the city.
Thank you. I also wanted to comment on Summer Night, because again, I was there for a while. I went early, and unfortunately, I couldn't deal with all the heat, so I didn't stay as long as I normally would. But while I was there, I happened to talk to some of the folks who were involved in a new arts program called Tapping into the Arts. This is a joint effort by the Light, Schenectady Light Opera, the Schenectady A R C, and Schenectady County Senior and Long Term Care Services, where they're offering a variety of three-day mini-courses and one-day workshops, things like Live Life Through Dance, Acting 101, Silk Flower Arrangements, and wreaths, things like that. A number of the courses have already finished. A couple of them are full, but there are still a number of them that are being offered to the end of this month and in the month of August. So this, again, is for folks who are senior citizens, our youth, as well as individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. So if any of you have an interest in that, I would encourage you probably to call either the county office or the Schenectady A R C, and I'm sure they can give you more information. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Schenectady Day Nursery, planning again for their annual Steak and Lobster Fest, which is gonna be Thursday, August 15th. And what they're trying to do is reach out to businesses and different organizations, and they will give a 10% discount on tickets if you buy 10 tickets or more. You can either then take, have dinner right there at the pavilion in Central Park, or they also have arranged now for a takeout system where you can just come and get your food and then go to your home or wherever to take, participate in that. This is just such a very worthwhile organization, and I think anything people can do to support it, and this is one very fun way to support it, because if you've never been to the Lobster Fest, as I said, the food is great, and it's a really good time. So I hope you'll think about that. And at this point then, I'm going to entertain a motion to recess the council meeting. This is just sort of a just-in-case thing, as we're finalizing the consolidated plan. If we come up with any little things we have to tweak before we submit the final application, this will give us a chance to talk about them before the deadline. So as I said, we don't anticipate anything, but again, just in case. So we're gonna recess it until the committee meeting on August 5th at 5:30. So Ms. Prazzo will move that. Is there a second? Ms. Rucker? All in favor? Aye. Okay, we are recessed. Thank you very much.